Into a misty forest of light beams and digital rays.
The whole point of this year's theme is this virtual forest and incorporating technology into the art community.
This was the second annual Van Nuys Art Festival. Live production mappings, virtual artwork, and a 3D dance party were just some of the attractions.
What up this town? Reverse!
This is really catered to showcase the talent here in the valley because you know, so many times we actually have to go over the hill to go see someone's artwork or to go see, check out a opening of a gallery.
And not only was artwork of all kinds available, but people of all kinds, big and small, got to turn artists for a night at this graffiti art battle and block party.
Arts and culture and creativity is alive in the San Fernando Valley!
The Discovery Cube Museum's Animal Tracks Footprint Workshop left the kids smiling. And for those with an appetite for more traditional fare, the Beer Garden offered hearty ale and hearty entertainment. All of this artsy stuff gave art lovers something to dance about, including Councilmember Nury Martinez. Organizers expected the festival to attract about 3,000 people.
The Van Nuys Arts Festival was free. Celebrate Dia de las Muertas over at Hollywood Forever Cemetery, bring the family out to a Halloween festival at MacArthur Park, or embark on a haunted hayride. All this in this week's Things to Do.
The 19th Annual Dia de las Muertas honors the Aztec goddess Kotliqu, who gave birth to the moon, stars, and the god of the sun and war. Her most famous monumental representation was at the Temple Mayor in Mexico City. After the Spanish conquest, the temple was destroyed and her statue was buried because it was considered an inappropriate pagan idol by Spanish invaders. After languishing in obscurity for more than 200 years, she was rediscovered in 1790. This event is part of LA's Department of Cultural Affairs Latino Heritage Month, a citywide commemoration of Latino history, heritage, and tradition in Los Angeles. It takes place at the Hollywood Forever Cemetery on October 27th at 12:00 PM. The City of LA's Department of Rakin Parks Councilman Gil Sadio and Westlake South Neighborhood Council invite you to Halloween Festival at MacArthur Park. There'll be lots of fun events, including a costume contest, face painting, haunted house, arts and crafts, trick-or-treating, and a special screening of the movie Hotel Transylvania 2. All the family fun takes place Saturday, October 27th from 5:00 to 9:00 PM at MacArthur Park located at 2230 West Sixth Street. For thrill seekers, check out the Los Angeles Haunted Hayride. The famed Griffith Park attraction takes folks on a hayride through the Old Zoo where they'll face the underworld and portrayals of the seven deadly sins. Are you ready to experience the thrill of the ride? The adventure and rides go until October 31st at the Old LA Zoo located at 4730 Crystal Springs Avenue in Griffith Park. For more, visit LosAngelesHauntedHayride.com. And that's a look at some things to do.
Well, that's going to do it for this edition.
We're Team Price inviting you to the 5th Annual South LA Dia de las Muertas Festival.
I'm Yana K. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org and check out our newest social media videos, LA This Minute.
This free, family-oriented, community event features live musical performances, altars
We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
and activities for all ages.
We'll have face painted.
Lotteria card games.
Calaquita contest.
A photo booth and much more. Artists performing include Sonora Santana, La Nueva Sangre.
Jukebox and Mariachi Trio Palenque de Aurelio Reyes.
It's going to be a family affair with plenty of great food, music, games, and best of all, it's free! See you Friday, October 26th at South Park.
Hi, I'm Gina Ray and this is my dog Whippet. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. This is our city and our channel.
Hi, I'm Gina Ray and this is my dog Whippet. We're from Winnetka. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. This is our city and our channel.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rue. And thank you all, Councilmembers. Happy Food Day! So here we're today we're talking about the good food economy and there really is so much at stake. As the councilmember said, food insecurity in LA is on the rise as too many of our neighbors have to choose between paying the rent and feeding their families. LA cuisine is now world-renowned, something we should be very proud of. But families in South LA, Pico Union, Boyle Heights, Pacoima, and many other parts of the city have to travel miles away from their home to go to a quality grocery store. Climate change threatens the food security of all of our communities. A lot is at stake, and yet we are building a better way forward. And thanks to you today, we have many victories to celebrate. Building a good food economy looks like bringing 50,000 sidewalk vendors out of the shadows of poverty and into the formal economy. Building a good food economy looks like taking a stand on the federal farm bill to defend public assistance for low-income families and defend sustainable and urban farming, which all of you did earlier this year. Thank you for that. Building a good food economy looks like the city donating edible food left over at events and facilities to food banks and shelters. And today, Councilmembers Suisar and Cricorian are leading on this effort. Thank you. Building a good food economy looks like eliminating food deserts by investing in locally-owned food businesses by creating good food zones in under-resourced neighborhoods. And today, Councilmember Price will be introducing a motion to that end. Finally, building a good food economy looks like investing millions of public dollars into local, sustainable, and ethical food producers through the Good Food Purchasing Policy, which recently received global attention with an award from the United Nations and the World Futures Council. Councilmember Carrats, you led on this issue six years ago today. And Councilmember Martinez, who's not here today, was the lead at LAUSD School Board. Since then, Councilmembers Rue and O'Farrell have done much to ensure the ongoing success of this cutting-edge and truly historic policy. I appreciate each of you. We have much work to do, Councilmembers, but we also must celebrate these victories. We are so grateful for your ongoing partnership in creating the good food economy, which provides access to good food, access to good jobs, and economic opportunity for all. We hope that you will stand with us outside today at the Good Food Marketplace. Many of the good food champions will be vending their food, and we look forward to our ongoing work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Now, on behalf of Mayor Eric Garcetti, please welcome Deputy Mayor Miguel Sangalong.
Good morning. I wanted to start off by saying one of the fondest memories I had as a child was when my mother actually invited many of my friends from school to come and have dinner with us. As an immigrant and as a person that was an ESL student at the time, that was one of the first times I felt connected to the community that I was in. And so, I'd start off by saying food is inextricably linked to the people in the same way that Angelenos, our people, are inextricably linked for the progress that happens in Los Angeles. It's no coincidence that Los Angeles resurgence as a major international city coincides with its culinary achievements. And on October 15th, just last Monday, Los Angeles was awarded recognition for the adoption of the Good Food Policy, Good Food Purchasing Program. The award was given by the United Nations Food and Agricultural Organization, the World Futures Council, and iPhone Organics International. And I'd like to point out that we were actually the only American city on this international platform that was recognized at that stage. Paula Daniels actually traveled to Rome on our behalf to accept the award. And as a side note, herself was awarded the prestigious Ashoka Fellowship for Social Entrepreneurship. So I'd like to recognize her for her achievements as well. Now, it really does take a village, and I'd like to recognize those that were critical in the adoption of the Good Food Policy Program, Good Food Purchasing Program exactly six years ago, some of which was mentioned by Claire. First through Mayor Virgosa's executive directive, and then memorialized by Councilmember Carrats' motion, seconded by then-Councilmember Garcetti and Huizar, and then passed unanimously by the City Council. A mere month later, LAUSD followed suit with the leadership from Councilmember Nury Martinez. And then since then, Good Food Purchasing Programs have been adopted throughout the country. It's now in 27 municipal institutions, including San Francisco, Chicago, New York, and a number of places in between. Through this program, millions have been redirected into local economies, hundreds of jobs created, environmental footprints reduced, and I think probably the greatest achievement there, healthier food served to millions of schoolchildren. The expansion of the program continues now through the Center for Good Food Purchasing, co-founded by Paula and Alexa Delwich. And so, I'd like to say watch out, there's probably more coming next year. And in closing, for my 45-minute remarks, I'd like to share a quote from Cesar Chavez. "If you really want to make a friend, go to someone's house and eat with them. The people who give you their food give you your heart." So, members of City Council, especially Councilmembers Carrats, O'Farrell, Rue, Huizar, and Martinez, thank you for giving your heart.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Now, this year, we have a very special food day. We have a farmer's market outside City Hall at City Hall East Plaza with live music and food for purchase. And for the first time ever, we have a citywide Good Food Champion. To help me present the award, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Paul Carrats. And as he's coming up, I just want to say that I think every community, every culture, everyone with a stomach and a love for Los Angeles loved Jonathan Gold. Jonathan meant more to our city than just food. He
Good morning, colleagues. Why don't you guys come on over?
Good morning, Mr. Rue. And you know, I want to make a quick special request.
Sure.
Would it be okay, as once you begin the presentation, if I go after you? Because I've got a large crowd that I'd like to. So if it's, you know, I don't know what your order would be. I guess I'm officially asking your permission to cut the line.
Yes, you can, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And happy Food Day. Today...
Give a round of applause.
Today is an important day and certainly the most delicious. As we continue to fight for food access and food equity in our city, celebrate good food champions throughout our city, and stand up for good food for all. One of the things that define Los Angeles is our food. We have cuisines from every culture, a network of local farms, and a blossoming restaurant scene that brings it all together in fresh and inventive ways. But this capital of cuisine is not equally shared by all of us. One in four children in Los Angeles go to bed hungry every night. Food insecurity remains stubbornly high, and for far too many families, putting a meal on the table remains out of reach. Growing up, my family was one of millions where in tough times we relied on food stamps. That is why, especially now, with the Congress bent on tearing apart the Farm Bill, and an administration making it harder for farmers to succeed, we need to stand up for a food economy that is sustainable, that is equitable, and ensures that no family is left wondering where their next meal is coming from. This is why I'm so proud that this year's Food Day L.A. theme is "Building the Good Food Economy." And when it comes to expanding access to good food, supporting food entrepreneurs, and fostering sustainable urban farming, we mean business. This City Council is taking the lead. Whether it's requiring EBT at our certified farmers markets or the many celebrations of our incredible food culture like the recent Taste of Soul in South Los Angeles just the other weekend, we are working to foster good food economy right here. And none of it would be possible without the leadership from our Los Angeles Food Policy Council and Executive Director Claire Fox. Let's give her a round of applause. The Los Angeles Food Policy Council works with numerous elected officials, including many of us here, on expanding food access, supporting Los Angeles farmers, and much more. As Executive Director, Claire has led the Food Policy Council with skill and determination. And she has been a major force for good in our city. Let's please welcome Claire Fox.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rue. And thank you all, Councilmembers. Happy Food Day. So here we're, today we're talking about the good food economy. And there really is so much at stake. As the council member said, food insecurity in L.A. is on the rise, as too many of our neighbors have to choose between paying the rent and feeding their families. L.A. cuisine is now world-renowned, something we should be very proud of. But families in South L.A., Pico Union, Boyle Heights, Pacoima, and many other parts of the city have to travel miles away from their home to go to a quality grocery store. Climate change threatens the food security of all of our communities. A lot is at stake. And yet, we are building a better way forward. And thanks to you today, we have many victories to celebrate. Building a good food economy looks like bringing 50,000 sidewalk vendors out of the shadows of poverty and into the formal economy. Building a good food economy looks like taking a stand on the federal Farm Bill to defend public assistance for low-income families and defend sustainable and urban farming, which all of you did earlier this year. Thank you for that. Building a good food economy looks like the city donating edible food left over at events and facilities to food banks and shelters. And today, Councilmembers Huizar and Krikorian, excuse me, are leading on this effort. Thank you. Building a good food economy looks like eliminating food deserts by investing in locally-owned food businesses by creating good food zones in under-resourced neighborhoods. And today, Councilmember Price will be introducing a motion to that end. Finally, building a good food economy looks like investing millions of public dollars into local, sustainable, and ethical food producers through the Good Food Purchasing Policy, which recently received global attention with an award from the United Nations and the World Futures Council. Councilmember Corretts, you led on this issue six years ago today. And Councilmember Martinez, who's not here today, was the lead at LUSD School Board. Since then, Councilmembers Rue and O'Farrell have done much to ensure the ongoing success of this cutting-edge and truly historic policy. I appreciate each of you. We have much work to do, Councilmembers, but we also must celebrate these victories. We are so grateful for your ongoing partnership in creating the good food economy, which provides access to good food, access to good jobs, and economic opportunity for all. We hope that you will stand with us outside today at the Good Food Marketplace. Many of the good food champions will be vending their food. And we look forward to our ongoing work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Now, on behalf of Mayor Eric Garcetti, please welcome Deputy Mayor Miguel Sangalong.
Good morning. I wanted to start off by saying one of the fondest memories I had as a child was when I, when my mother actually invited many of the, my friends from school to come and have dinner with us. As an immigrant and as a person that was an ESL student at the time, that was one of the first times I felt connected to the community that I was in. And so, I'd start off by saying food is inextricably linked to the people in the same way that Angelenos, our people, are inextricably linked for the progress that happens in Los Angeles. It's no coincidence that Los L.A.'s resurgence as a major international city coincides with its culinary achievements. And on October 15, just last Monday, Los Angeles was awarded recognition for the adoption of the Good Food Policy, Good Food Purchasing Program. The award was given by the United Nations Food and Agricultural Organization, the World Futures Council, and iPhone Organics International. And I'd like to point out that we were actually the only American city on this international platform that was recognized at that stage. Paula Daniels actually traveled to Rome on our behalf to accept the award. And as a side note, herself was awarded the prestigious Ashoka Fellowship for Social Entrepreneurship. So I'd like to recognize her for her achievements as well. Now, it really does take a village. And I'd like to recognize those that were critical in the adoption of the Good Food Policy Program, Good Food Purchasing Program exactly six years ago, some of which was mentioned by Claire. First through Mayor Virgosa's executive directive, and then memorialized by Councilmember Corretts's motion, seconded by then-Councilmember Garcetti and Huizar, and then passed unanimously by the City Council. A mere month later, LUSD followed suit with the leadership from Councilmember Nury Martinez. And then since then, good food purchasing programs have been adopted throughout the country. It's now in 27 municipal institutions, including San Francisco, Chicago, New York, and a number of places in between. Through this program, millions have been redirected into local economies, hundreds of jobs created, environmental footprints reduced, and I think probably the most, the greatest achievement there, healthier food served to millions of schoolchildren. The expansion of the program continues now through the Center for Good Food Purchasing, co-founded by Paula and Alexa Delwich. And so, I'd like to say, watch out. There's probably more coming next year. And in closing from my 45-minute remarks, I'd like to share a quote from Cesar Chavez. "If you really want to make a friend, go to someone's house and eat with them. The people who give you their food give you your heart." So, members of City Council, and especially Councilmembers Corretts, O'Farrell, Rue, Huizar, and Martinez, thank you for giving your heart.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Now, this year, we have a very special Food Day. We have a farmer's market outside City Hall at City Hall East Plaza with live music and food for purchase. And for the first time ever, we have a citywide Good Food Champion. To help me present the award, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Paul Corretts. And as he's coming up, just want to say that I think every community, every culture, everyone with a stomach and a love for Los Angeles loved Jonathan Gold. Jonathan meant more to our city than just food. He helped us discover what was beautiful about our city, our common bond, our many distinct tastes, and a melting pot of Los Angeles. He championed things that made us unique, distinct, and delicious. Now with the award presentation, Councilmember Paul Corretts.
Well, thank you, David. And I appreciate your seizing the reins of our food policy as Health Chair and organizing this incredible day and keeping the good food movement going strong in Los Angeles. I can think of nobody more deserving in our very first Citywide Good Food Champion Award. And frankly, you may have to retire the award immediately because I don't know who could possibly follow him. I only very much wish he could be here today with us to accept it. Jonathan Gold, the Pulitzer Prize-winning Los Angeles Weekly and L.A. Times restaurant critic, was one of the most celebrated, and perhaps more importantly, one of the most appreciated voices in this city. Jonathan wrote about restaurants for more than three decades and became an influential cultural ambassador for this city in which he was born and raised. Some food critics simply write about food. Jonathan Gold wrote about the people, the cultures, and the neighborhoods of the Los Angeles region through the lens of food. Anthony Bourdain described him as the first guy to change the focus from white tablecloth restaurants to really cool little places in strip malls. He always seemed to be after a larger theme with his writing, showing us how despite our perceived differences in Los Angeles, we are all truly and indelibly connected by food. As he himself put it in the 2015 City of Gold documentary made about him, "We are all citizens of the world, strangers together." Inspired by his brother Mark Gold, Heal the Bays then-President, who is here with us today, Jonathan also did some environmental work on the side. He likely didn't know it, but he and I ended up working to support the same legislation in 2011, a statewide ban on shark fin sales. His remarkable op-ed entitled "Taste of Extinction" helped push Assemblymember Paul Fong's bill across the finish line and saved the lives of hundreds of thousands of sharks and helped grow the global shark conservation movement. What Jonathan meant to Los Angeles was apparent this Saturday night after his passing, when on the occasion of what would have been his 58th birthday, City Hall and other landmarks across the region, including Union Station, the Broad, the National History Museum, the pylons at LAX, the Pasadena City Hall, and the Pacific Wheel on Santa Monica Pier, all lit up with gold lights to say goodbye. Here to accept the award on behalf of his brother, who is himself one of the truly great environmental champions of our city, is Mark Gold.
Thank you so much. I'm deeply moved by this. You know, every single day, you can imagine, is really tough. And it's, you know, it's a shared loss for the entire city. And so, I understand that. I was hoping Lori Ochoa, my sister-in-law, his wife, would be here. I don't think she could quite make it in time, which is also a Jonathan Gold trait. So I guess that that family tradition continues. And, you know, this honor from the standpoint of looking at food equity and food access is really one of the main things that Jonathan was all about. He brought all of us together within Los Angeles and really broke down barriers in just such a civil and graceful way. And I think really has taught us so much about ourselves in Los Angeles, and things not to fear and things to enjoy about what's great, about the incredible diverse culture that really makes Los Angeles unique in the world. And so, thank you again for this honor for Jonathan. Obviously, it means a great deal to me and my family. And couldn't be more proud of all the amazing work that he did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Councilman Corretts. Now, the heroes that, who make good food reality every single day, let's give it up for the Los Angeles Good Food Champions right behind me. Now, as I read the names of the champions from each district, I invite them to stand beside their councilmembers in the horseshoe. And if your councilmember is not present, feel free to stand by me here up on the podium. And I'll read the names of all the champions for each district. From Council District 1, Robert Egger, founder and president of L.A. Kitchen. From Council District 2, from Council District 2, the North Hollywood Interfaith Food Pantry. From Council District 3, the West Valley Food Pantry. And of course, the one and only, in Council District 4, Locally Healthy Convenience. From Council District 5, Maxine's Heavenly. From Council District 6, It's Juice Time. Council District 7, Chef Wendy Centeno of Guayaba Kitchen. From Council District 8, Hank's Mini Market. From Council District 9, the Los Angeles Trade Technical College Culinary Arts Pathway. From Council District 10, the Lemur Park Friday Night Block Party. From Council District 11, the Emerson Avenue Community Gardens. From Council District 12, Cal State University Northridge Food Pantry. From Council District 13, Gary Tagliano of the Tagliano Cultural Complex. From Council District 14, Sustainable Little Tokyo. And of course, from Council District 15, From Lot to Spot. Let's give it up for all of our 2018 Los Angeles Good Food Champions. And I urge everyone to come out to City Hall East Plaza, where the festivities will continue, and you could try some of the amazing foods made by these Good Food Champions. But without further ado, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I want to present this resolution declaring October 24, 2018, Food Day, Los Angeles. Thank you all for joining us. And please join us outside at City Hall East.
Okay, Mr. Englander. If I can get Mr. Englander to come pinch-hit for me.
Mr. President, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Let's give Mr. Rue a round of applause for being the leader on our 8th Annual Food Day. Now, members, you heard him reference the Lemur Park Block Party, which is in the district that I represent. And the reason why I wanted to come up here, and the reason why you see all of these healthy, good-looking people standing behind me is because these are people, young people, that had a dream. And they should be an inspiration to young entrepreneurs in this city. Once a month, at Lemur Park, we have a block party, where we have about 18 food trucks. And they do it, one night, it was Black College Night, and they had the community came out. And they, they not only have great food, but it's great fun. Mr. Sadio, one night, we had, I think it's Lucha Libre. So we had Mexican wrestling in the hood with masks. We blocked off the street. These 18 entrepreneurs, believe it or not, collectively have almost 700,000 followers on their Instagram. These are individuals that the community would have said it was going to be tough for them to make it and survive. They proved that wrong, and they should be an inspiration to all. Like Mel's Tacos. Mel would cook tacos for his family and friends. He bought a food cart, not a truck, a cart. And now, he owns a brick-and-mortar facility, Mel's Taco on Crenshaw Boulevard. I almost said Billionaire Boys Club, but Billionaire Burger Boys, they, they help coordinate this block party that we have once a month. And these guys were on the Food Network in one of the Guy Fieri Shows contests, and they won 10 grand. 20,000. And then, what is it, is Chef, Chef Ocho? Chef Ocho, All Flavor, No Grease. This guy's food was so good, people would come to his house and eat it on the sidewalk, all right? But he got a truck. He evolved. He has been highlighted on the Steve Harvey Show. These are successful entrepreneurs. Hey, and I was just at an event with Mr. Corretts, and the entire menu was vegan, and it was good, all right? But we have our own vegan food truck in our district, too, Jack's Fruit Cafe. And the young lady to my right, Angela Kaia, many of you, you heard that expression, "Bye, Felicia"? It was based on a character in a movie that she played in Fridays. And she runs a vegan food truck in our district. So let's give her a round of applause. But I have with me again today Billionaire Burger Boys. Give them a round. The Blue Kitchen. Taco Mel. Jack's, Jack's Fruit Cafe. And you should also know, her son was drafted into the NFL, so she knows how to raise them right, okay? And we have All Flavor, No Grease. Not Your Mama's Kitchen Soul Food. The Taco Box. Jamaican Cafe. World Famous Cobbler King. Postcards. Naze Tacos. Comfort L.A. Chef C's Smoking Pot. Wing Society. Occasion. Mega Potato Stuffed. Happy Ice. Creo City. Vibe 305. Big Man Big Dogs. I Love Funnel Cakes. And until 3:00 P.M. today, there are going to be, there's going to be about nine food trucks on Main Street selling food. This is America, so they are selling food. But I invite everybody to go out and get some great food representing the South Side of this great city. Mr. Rue, and to all of the honorees, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson.
And real quick on that, too. I don't know if Channel 35 can zoom in on this. This is one of the burgers. You got to look at this thing. Look at that. Look at that. All right, is that, is that here today in front of City Hall, too? You need a semi-truck for that. What are you talking about, a food truck? Look at that. That is awesome.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know Mr. Wesson threw the gauntlet down, but I want to remind all members, we do have at City Hall East, we will be presenting all of the honorees again. So, I'm afraid to ask, is anyone else on the queue?
Everybody is on the queue. And so, this is, this is what I want to do because I know that all the councilmembers who have requested that we weren't actually going to introduce who we brought down. But it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of logistics for these folks, particularly to take the time off of their work and sit in what we're so proud of, our L.A. city traffic, to come all the way down here and park. And so, what I'm going to ask is that we actually go through a rapid-fire around the horseshoe. For those who want to take a second to introduce quickly, hint, hint, there are folks who they brought down, and we'll go really quickly, if that's okay with you, Mr. Rue.
That's fine with me.
Great. We'll start with Marquise Harris-Dawson.
So much, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Rue and Mr. Wesson. With all of our famous restaurants, I got to give props to The Blue Kitchen from the 8th Council District, as well as a host of the other restaurants there. Our honoree today is Hank's Market on Florence Boulevard. Hank's Market was formerly a liquor store on Florence Boulevard. And this has special meaning to me because during my time at Community Coalition, we worked to help clean up liquor stores and sometimes close down liquor stores. And Hank's stepped forward and said, "We want to become the kind of place that's welcoming to everybody, that families can use, childrens can use, and that the community feels safe around." And so, now, it's an organic market. It's got specialty grocery products that you can't get anywhere else. And it is a community center along with being a market. And so, we're very excited about Hank's Market, and we invite you all to visit there when you're in South L.A.
All right. Next, Councilmember Bonin.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Because my honorees actually follow the rules, they went in to the back, so I'm waiting for them to come out. So why don't we come back to me?
We'll come back to you, absolutely. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Great. We didn't follow the rules. We didn't realize that was the rule. So, I am thrilled to have with me here Debbie Decker, who's the Executive Director of the West Valley Food Pantry, Herman Fisher and Carol Fisher. Herman is the Vice Chair of the Board. Carol Fisher is a member of the Board and also a member of COL-TICPA. And the West Valley Food Pantry has been an organization on the front lines of feeding folks and dealing with food insecurity and homelessness. The West Valley Food Pantry is located actually very close to where I live, right around the corner. We did a Homeless Connect Day with them last week, but they are on the front line and served over 125 people at that. But they are on the front lines of dealing with food insecurity. A lot of people, they look at my district, they think, "Oh, well, there's no food insecurity in the West Valley." Well, the sad reality is, we have a lot of people who are homeless or on the verge of homelessness who are in incredible need for food. And the West Valley Food Pantry has been on the front lines for over 10 years, making a difference. And these folks behind me have been driving that effort, and I'm here to recognize them and the great work they do. And I thought it was appropriate for Food Day to talk about those issues.
Fantastic.
So, let's give it up for the West Valley Food Pantry.
Thank you. Mr. Bloomingfield, we don't look at you and look at your district to think there's a food insecurity. It's just looking at you. No, Mr. Bonin.
December what? Counting the days. Thank you, Mr. President. All present and accounted for now. I'm glad to have with us Mike Calzalla and Karen Schaefer, the Chairman and the Vice President of the Board of the Emerson Avenue Community Garden Association in Westchester. Good food is a cornerstone of community, and good food... Uh, good food is a cornerstone of community and good food is gonna be something in Los Angeles that is multi-generational. And the folks behind me are really part of making that happen in Westchester. The Emerson Ave Community Garden is a sustainable, organic green space for local community members to start their own garden, much like, uh, community gardens all around, but this one is on the site of an LAUSD campus, uh, and it provides students at both Wish Charter and Orville Wright Middle School with an opportunity to learn and grow about food and develop the sense of community and the appreciation and, uh, for good food that, that we need and that they need. This is also the site of the annual Westchester Art and Music Festival, which is a phenomenal event, uh, that has been happening for the past three years. And, uh, the proceeds go directly to benefit this organization. Uh, they're wonderful, they're part of the community, they're part of the school and they're part of the neighborhood, uh, and it's an honor to present this to you today.
Alright, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, continuing on our lightning round, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, today I am proud to ha, to be joined by Wendy Centeno, who is the founder, chef, operator of Wayaba Kitchen from my community in Pacoima. And what's, for those of you that, uh, were, uh, able to join us at El Grito at the, at the reception, at the VIP reception, you would have had an opportunity to try some of the incredible plant-based cuisine, which never leaves the roots of the, the quality Mexican ingredients. Wendy has really done an outstanding job of incorporating our Mexican roots and flavors into vegan cooking, and she's done a magnificent job, but even more importantly, what she has done is helped to instruct better eating habits and better cooking techniques for a community that helps to preserve our tradition and help to evolve with good food in our family kitchens. So, thank you for your work, Wendy. She's done an outstanding job at the Community Kitchen to help teach members of our community, it's opened up, uh, an incredible chance for folks to learn different techniques and maintaining the traditions of Latino cuisine. And, and I'm so grateful that she's a part of our community because in Pacoima in particular and so many parts of the Northeast Valley, where not only we have the food insecurities, we have food deserts. And having access to quality foods in the Northeast San Fernando Valley, she's helping to change that narrative and making it far more accessible to have really healthy cuisine and helping to change the patterns of behavior that have historically created, uh, diabetes and all of the other, uh, health concerns that have been prevalent in communities of color. So, thank you, Wendy, we're proud to have you here today.
Alright, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Today, we have the honor of recognizing the LA Trade Technical Colleges Culinary Arts Program. Let's give it up for the J-Tech College Tech Culinary Arts Program. With me is, uh, Chef, uh, Chef Stacy and, uh, Administrator Vincent here with us today. Uh, but each year this program trains hundreds of Angelenos, hundreds of Angelenos, many of whom, uh, have some, um, um, some, uh, issues with, uh, barriers to employment, uh, but we work to place them in, in competitive jobs in the culinary arts industry. Uh, we can't have a good food economy without good jobs, right? Uh, so LA Trade Tech Culinary Pathway Program not only creates good jobs, but works to, uh, assist Angelenos from low-income neighborhoods like the ones that I represent. Uh, so on behalf of CD9, we want to thank Trade Tech for the work you're doing to promote and foster a good food economy in LA. Keep up the good work and happy eating!
Alright, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Claire, thank you so much for always doing this and highlighting what Los Angeles is now known for, and that is world-class cuisine. And anyone who travels internationally for the last couple of years realizes that the best food in the world is right here in Los Angeles. So it gives me great pleasure to introduce my friend and someone who has helped define that for us, Gary Tagliano of the Tagliano Cultural Complex, the founder and executive director. Um, so, he's, he's joined by his brother, Jack, who's standing right, sitting right there filming this, so thank you. His lovely wife Stella is at home taking care of their growing family, so we send, uh, our, our congratulations to the whole family. But here's, here's what, uh, the Tagliano philosophy of excellence is, pride, honor, generosity, and prestige. And I think everyone around this horseshoe has been here and seen that in action. These are attributes that define the Tagliano family and by extension, the Tagliano Cultural Complex. Since donating the complex to the Western Diocese of the Armenian Church in '07, the Taglians have managed every event in philanthropic endeavor while adhering to these guideline, guiding principles, and in doing so cultivated a philosophy of excellence which permeates all aspects of the Tagliano Complex's culture. Here's their statement, "The desire to improve their surroundings, or our surroundings on both a local and global scale is one of my family's core ideologies." What a beautiful mission. For decades, the Taglians have been some of Los Angeles' most generous philanthropists, making large donations to local, community organizations, supporting international charities, and giving to community-focused institutions, all while feeding everyone gourmet, world-class Armenian food. By volunteering their time and resources to help improve the lives of those in need here at home, they also embrace the belief that direct action, not monetary donation alone, is necessary for enacting real social change. This is my home away from home, and I'm not even kidding you. Just here's some of the recent events they've had. Last week, I was at the Bresi Foundation Bids for Kids Gala, Dress for Success Annual Luncheon, Holly Grove Camp Fundraiser, Los Angeles Children's Hospital Gala, Kaiser Permanente fundraising event, Society for Orphaned Armenian Relief Event, My Friends' Place Dinner and Silent Auction, the African American Film Critics Association Awards, Hans Schneider International Children's Foundation Annual Gala. They, they host the annual Friends of Hollywood Central Park, For the Love of Hollywood Gala, LA Fashion Week, the United States Marine Corps Ball, Project Angel Foods, uh, Awards Gala, and you've seen them on television in Grey's Anatomy and Shaws of Sunset. Uh, so, thank you, Gary, and your entire family for, for what you provide our community. You're so much more than just a place to eat an incredible meal, you really are a cultural institution, uh, worthy of the residents of Hollywood. Thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And, uh, Mr. O'Farrell is certainly right, Los Angeles has become the home to some of the most interesting, innovative, uh, highest-quality food in all of America, and it's become, building a reputation for innovation, uh, that we can all be proud of, and it's so appropriate that we recognize Jonathan Gold as being one of the ambassadors of, uh, Los Angeles food, uh, throughout America. Uh, but Good Food Day also gives us an opportunity to recognize not only that, but also the fact that many in Los Angeles, um, are food insecure every single day. Uh, many in Los Angeles will never have an opportunity to eat in some of our finest restaurants. Many in Los Angeles will worry about whether they will have a meal that day. And for thirty-five years now, the North Hollywood Interfaith Food Pantry has met the needs of people like that throughout the East San Fernando Valley. Uh, people who may not have anything to eat that day but for the work of the North Hollywood Interfaith Food Pantry. And this has been a, a wonderful coalition of congregations of every faith, uh, throughout the East San Fernando Valley, joining together with, uh, generous and concerned individuals, with community organizations, including the Boy Scouts of America and many others, um, that have come together to help those most in need in our community. And I want to give a special shout-out to, uh, the irrepressible Luis Ollyart, who for over a decade now, has been the, uh, face of the North Hollywood Interfaith Food Pantry, has been a force of nature which has brought our community together in support of the pantry. Uh, he's, he's just an amazing, dedicated, committed person who has really made this click. And my office has been proud to partner with the pantry, both in, uh, our annual food drives, uh, but also the pantry comes to all of our Homeless Connect Days as well, to be able to provide food, uh, to those who are most in need. So, I'm very, very pleased to be able to recognize for all of their work, for the two hundred thousand pounds of food every year that they donate to, uh, people in need, uh, the North Hollywood Interfaith Food Pantry. And rec, uh, representing the pantry today is Barbara Javits, and Barbara, thank you very much for all of the work that the pantry has done for those most in need in, in my district. Thank you.
Fantastic, that is fantastic. Councilmember Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, that's a tough act to follow, but, uh, we'll do it. For people who like to snack, it's tough to find food that is both tasty and healthy. However, right here in CD5, we have Maxine's Heavenly Cookies. They start out with health and taste and nutrition, and they're a non-GMO project-certified, gluten-free certified, vegan-certified product. They strive to use the most nutrition-rich, nutrient-rich and unrefined ingredients possible, and it's as if they've adopted, uh, the city's good food policy as their own. Um, I'm proud to have, uh, good vegan jobs created here in the CD5. Uh, in, in 2017, Taste TV gave Maxine's Heavenly Chocolate Chip Cookie a top health snack award, and I'm naming Maxine's Heavenly Cookies, um, as, uh, Council District Five's Good Food Policy Champion. Uh, if you want to taste, they have tastes available, um, today in the marketplace, and so I just want to recognize them as, uh, the best healthy snack one can find anywhere, and I'm proud to have that here in my district, so thank you.
Alright, thank you, congratulations. Mr. Busciano.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Before I honor our Good Food Champion, um, from Lots to Spots, I do want to, um, share with you a quick thirty-second video how, um, our community gardens are so important to us. Personally, the Busciano family in immigrant communities, um, the community gardens heavily rely on the community, um, community gardens. There you see Dad Mateo, my Dad Mateo, make his own sauce, showing his fruits of labor from the tomatoes he grew in his own community garden in San Pedro, along with Mom. And some of my colleagues have had a chance to experience and enjoy this red sauce, but it goes to show, even when I was a kid, my nonu, my grandfather also, my uncles, remember, um, planting seeds and picking the, uh, the fruits and vegetables. Oh, look at the drill, that's the old immigrant Italian way of really, uh, working on your sauces, using that, that's technology at its finest there. But nonetheless, um, I'd like to bring forth our Good Food Champion, the Lots to Spots, Maria De Leon, come on, get closer, as well as Enrique Huerta. Viviana Franco, who is the, um, the founder and Executive Director from Lots to Spots, couldn't be with us today, but she believes in creating equitable access to parks and food gardens in working-class communities of color. The organization aims to create twenty green spaces by 2020 in communities that need it most. They've completed eleven projects and are currently developing five more. Um, they, uh, their first one was in Watts and has just blossomed, um, right across the street from Jordan High School. And, uh, they've started one, another, an additional one in Watts, as well as, uh, taken over ownership of, and management of the community garden on North Gaffey Street. So, in Watts, um, they considered, uh, which is considered a food desert community, these community gardens are quite, uh, literally changing lives for my communities. And the benefits from Lots of Spots brings to our communities stretch further than just providing fresh produce, they're increasing, uh, green space in my district and creating a sense of community. So, help me welcome them and, and honor them from Lots of Spot. Thank you so much for your commitment and dedication to our ever-growing, uh, issues involving food. Thank you so much, Mr. Rue, for your acknowledgement.
Congratulations. And with me, and they're standing all over here, I have Maria Elizondo, Patrick Bailey, Rafael de la Rosa, and Vicky Allen. And I want to, before I tell you a little bit about who they are and what they do, a lot of us have already spoken about food insecurities. A lot of us have talked about the ability, and I think Mr. Kokorian really emphasized this, about where people are even thinking about eating that day and how it impacts and affects their lives. This one's near and dear to me because I grew up getting government cheese in a cardboard box that I know a lot of you have as well, if you remember that back in the day, where they used to mail that to your house. And my mom can cook cheese a thousand different ways because that's all we had. And, um, what the Seesun Food Pantry is doing is they are able to keep students in school that otherwise not only would go hungry, not only would not, would worry about where they're going to eat, if they're going to eat at all, but they, make no mistake, wouldn't be in school, wouldn't be getting an education, going to college. We don't have colleges that are Title I schools. It's up to the community to get together, it's up to individuals and volunteers to go out and make sure that they not only get the food, but if you can imagine how difficult it is for a college student who thinks they finally made it, who thinks they're independent, to actually ask at that point for help, for a handout, for a meal, so they can stay in school and not starve in a classroom, and not drop out because they're gonna go hungry. What they're doing beyond providing a meal, beyond just feeding a child, is providing an opportunity to end poverty in their life, to, to crush that cycle, to get on their own two feet. They want to be contributing members of society and further their education. That meal does more than any other meal they've probably had in their life because it keeps them in school. So to the Seesun Food Pantry, I thank you, God bless you, continue the hard work and what you're doing, and Godspeed. Thank you so much, and thank you to all the presentations. I turn it back over to Councilmember Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and, um, on behalf of, of Councilmember Ner Martinez, I'd like to recognize Alvaro, come on up, Alvaro Aviles, of its juice time in Panorama City. Alvaro, Alvaro, Al, Aviles grew up in Panorama City with his parents who still reside in the neighborhood. He is a true Valley native because he attended Grant High and later went to study at Valley College. Um, Alvaro, at a young age, was diagnosed with diabetes, so he understands firsthand the importance of healthy foods and fueling our bodies with the right ingredients. In 2015, he and his brother decided it was time to bring their talents home to Panorama City to provide the people with an option of honest and nutritious food. And that's how Juice Time was created. It's Juice Time has created. Lack of access to healthy foods disproportionately affects communities like those in Northeast Valley, and it's Juice, and Juice Time is located right next to Kaiser Permanente in Panorama City, so where the doctors and patients alike can all benefit from having this new healthy option around the corner. And it's also a local favorite because of its delicious options and low price point, point with fresh ingredients. And as Los Angeles moves forward towards creating a, a policy on sustainability and access to fresh foods, we are proud to honor community-driven pioneers like Alvaro Aviles. Thank you. Thank you. Next, I'd like to also introduce, on behalf of Council District 14 and Councilmember Jose Huizar, the good, his Good Food Champion of Sustainable Little Tokyo. I am honored to have Amy Hanjio, um, one of the founding members here with me. And Sustainable Little Tokyo works to ensure healthy, equitable, and culturally-rich Little Tokyo to, for generations to come. They are a great example of what happens when people come together to create a better community. Sustainable Little Tokyo began as a community outreach in 2013, and since then has turned into a neighborhood-generated framework dedicated to environmental, economic, and cultural sustainability. The group strongly believes in the phrase motini, motini?
Motainai.
Motainai, a familiar Japanese phrase, uh, phrase expressing, "What a waste." This all-encompassing concept can also be interpreted into three Rs, respect for the earth, respect for your community, and respect for yourself. Sustainable Little Tokyo practices motainai, right? By making sure events in the community are zero food waste, producing a pop-up market, and by opening a community compost hub, hub for the public. And on behalf of Council District 14, we thank you, Little Tokyo and the city at large are better off because of your hard work and, and dedication. Thank you, congratulations. Last but not least, can I bring up, I am proud to celebrate Council District Four's Good Food Champion and ABC Seven's Best Sandwich in Los Angeles. And I'm throwing the gauntlet down there, and I'm going last, so no one else could refute that. And that is Locale. They are located in central Hollywood, as well as Venice, West Hollywood, and downtown Los Angeles, and Locale makes healthy food easy and affordable for all Los Angeles. And I gotta say, as a, um, someone who often goes to 7-Eleven for meals, I like to admit that Locale- that Locale has completely changed my viewpoint and paradigm because they are basically a healthy option to that convenience store. Locale is delicious, nutritious, and all Los Angeles local. And, you know, what I love about them is they're, yeah, that's right. And what I love about them is that they're redefining the grab-and-go concept with healthy options. It is organic. It is vegan and vegetarian options. And their logo is, and their motto, not their logo, I'm sorry, their motto is "Eat Smart All Day." And, you know, this is, I am just so thrilled that Locale is in my district, as well as throughout the city of Los Angeles, and it shows us that the future of, that there is a future for convenient, affordable foods that actually gives us something that's worth eating. And I want to present this to the two co-founders who are here today, Greg Horace, who also, by the way, was my Hollywood, was my neighborhood council member at Hollywood United Neighborhood Council, and Melissa Rosen, and of course, their little baby.
Lily.
Lily. Thank you so very much, and thank you to all the food honorees. And again, we will all be, you could taste all the samples of all the 15 different restaurants, as well as more farmer's market food trucks all outside in City Hall East. And I'd like to make an announcement for all the honorees, if you guys could come join us in the back.
Wait, Mr. Rue, I think we have one follow-up question because you left us all kind of hanging there. So you said the best sandwich.
That's right.
But you didn't tell us what kind of sand, what's on this sandwich?
The Vegan Rubin.
The Vegan Rubin.
Ah, makes your mind think, right?
Your next lunch is on me.
All right.
Come on down, come on down.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's give Mr. Rue a big round of applause for putting this together today, his entire staff, all those honorees, thank you so much. And David, that's a great-looking suit. I recognize that suit. It looks good. All right, with, it's, I'll explain it later. It's a log story, Mr. Krikorian. All right. So with that, colleagues, let's go ahead and take item six, if we could. Madam Clerk?
And Mr. President, the committee report has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Great. Excellent. Thank you very much. Folks, I'd like to welcome Ms. Eileen Decker up to the table. Ms. Decker, and if you're going to call out from the audience, I'm going to ask you to leave the meeting because you'll be disrupting this meeting. So, Ms. Decker, thank you very much. Ms. Decker's been recently, in fact, just this morning, very recently, approved unanimously by the Public Safety Committee to be our next Commissioner on the Board of Police Commissioners. And while we talked a lot this morning about it, as way of introduction, I want to thank you very much personally for stepping up to what I believe is absolutely the most important thing we do in the city of Los Angeles, and that is public safety. And we've led that effort in transparency by being the first major city in law, in the country, having a citizen commission that oversees our sworn officers and department. With that, it's critically important that we always appoint those who care most about Angelinos, their safety, and everything that revolves around policy pertaining to the Los Angeles Police Department. I could think of no one better, and somebody who I'm proud to have worked with for many, many years in different capacities than Ms. Decker, to step up and assume this role. And I want to thank you personally. I think, I know we said a lot this morning, so I wanted to open up to you to address the council and let us know a little bit about what you hope to accomplish and your role on, on the board.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilmen. I truly appreciate your kind words, both here in council chambers and this morning in the Public Safety Committee, and thank you to all the members of the council for consideration of the nomination of the mayor. And of course, I should acknowledge the mayor and thank him very much for the nomination. I'm very much aware of the history of the department and the importance of the commission in having civilian oversight of the police department. And I think my years here in the city, six years as deputy mayor, both for Mayor Villarogosa and Mayor Garcetti, allowed me to learn a great deal about the city, a great deal about the commission, the important work the commission did to work on the consent decree and getting out of the consent decree, and how the city has proven to be, and the department proven to be, much stronger as a result. And so my dedication to upholding the concept of the commission and having civilian oversight is very true and very real. I'm also hopeful that my time in the city will allow me to get very engaged in the department, get engaged with the community, and help bridge that gap that sometimes exists between the department and, and the citizens it serves to protect. And I believe my time as a federal prosecutor, as U.S. Attorney, and as a line assistant U.S. Attorney will enhance my ability to do that very important work of oversight. So again, Mr. President, thank you very much for the consideration.
Thank you very much. And colleagues, Mr. Corretts on the board, and then also I want to recognize our chief of the Los Angeles Police Department, Chief Michael Moore is here today as well. And Chief, if you, I don't, if you, I don't know if you wanted to say a few words, if not, that's okay too. Mr. Corretts is on the floor.
And I just wanted to congratulate Eileen. Your background is spot-on. I know we've all worked with you. We know you'll do a terrific job, and so I think I want to congratulate you on not necessarily the easiest job that you're taking on, but we couldn't make a better selection. So I look forward to working with you and watching your great work in this capacity.
Thank you, sir.
Great. Seeing no other members on the queue, Chief?
Good morning, Councilmen's, and it is, or Councilpersons, it's my pleasure to be here today in support of this nomination. I remember the last time I was here in this chamber very clearly with Ms. Decker, and as this very council was congratulating her in her appointment as U.S. Attorney here for the Central District, and thanking her for her work as the deputy mayor of Homeland Security and Public Safety for both Mayor Villarogosa as well as Mayor Garcetti, a feat that I think spoke to the wisdom of both mayors, but also Ms. Decker's ability to navigate the elected chambers and positions and the oversight of how a public safety agency delivers its services. And in that combination of civilian oversight of department operations and with our elected officials, Ms. Decker has been a powerful ally of, of the citizens of this community. She is one that understands clearly what it takes for public safety in her various positions that she's held throughout her background, and she has tasked the Los Angeles Police Department to do better and has acclaimed us when we have. And so I look forward to her appointment, and I'll close by saying that, as I said in my remarks on that day, which is we have to bring her back. She cannot be away from the city, and I am thankful for Mayor Garcetti's appointment through the commission, and I look forward to working under your leadership. Thank you.
Well said, Chief. Thank you. So true. Welcome back. Mr. Bonnet.
Thank you. We forgot to mention, I think, her most important credential. What council district do you live in?
That would be 11, sir. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Wow. All right. So with that, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the confirmation of Ms. Decker to the Los Angeles Police Commission. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen, nine.
It is unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you again very much. Let's give her a big round of applause. Let's go ahead and go into the fun festivities, multiple speaker cards. Wayne, come on up. You're on one, two, three, four, five, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, 16, 17.
That's right. It's good. So let's see. Oh, wait a minute. Hold on. I have to stay away from that asshole. Okay.
All right. If you're not going to speak on the actual agenda items, we're going to forfeit your time. Again, you know the rules. We say them every time. We said them in committee this morning where you were kicked out of that meeting for disrupting it. Stay on the agenda.
Street lighting, okay. So number two, street lighting districts in CD2. So that's Paul Krikorian, known as the GOAT, and we don't support it. We don't like him. That's why I don't support it. That's why I became a GOAT, because of him. And one, and two, fuck street lighting in the second district. We don't like street lighting in the second district. But now we get to number three, in Jose Huizar's district, he needs lighting. And the reason he needs lighting is because you need to see what you're buying under those lights. Yes. Armando Herman will elaborate. So Proposition 218, fuck Proposition 218, fuck the streetlights. And then we get to number four, CD5, pip, bob, pig. Yes, so we support that. Oh, there he is. Yes, sir. Okay. Oh, thank you, sir. Now we get to number five, lighting district of number three. Should we give Bob Blumenthal a break, everybody? Okay, we'll support, yay, we'll support that. We'll give you your street lighting today. Ah, that's nice. See, when you do a good job and you don't fuck with us, we're the first to say so. Good job. Now we get to the surplus, food policy ordinance. The number one thing, have some fucking candy in your goddamn offices on Halloween. That's food. It's surplus food. Now, I went to, with my friend, four offices the other day to look for surplus candy food, and I only came up with Nurri and Jose Huizar who have surplus food in their offices.
Yes, I don't think this is really relevant.
No, he's not.
Food policy.
No, 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 no. You're way off.
It's food.
No. You can't just mention the word "food" and call it "food policy" because of trick-or-treating. So with that, start us one minute of general public comment.
It's trick-or-treat. Sorry. See, this is why we can't talk. Let's talk about who is the staffer that Jose Huizar's sleeping with. I went up and asked yesterday, and nobody will answer the question. Marquis Aristosan knows, but he won't talk because he's eating surplus food. See? That's the reason why. Why is Jose Huizar, for the second time in four years, being sued by a staff member? Why is he using and deleting emails for Rochelle Huizar? This has to stop. Jose Huizar needs to be removed from the city council. He's a liability. Appoint Armando Herman to the 14th District immediately. Immediately.
Okay, we're actually going to go back to item 11 and take the individual cards on that item now. Followed by Amy, Frank, and Ida. Come on up.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Allison Schill with Refeed America, and I'm here in support of the proposition to increase food donation, especially with city contracts. I believe it's the first step towards eliminating the concept of food waste. We should not have food waste in general, and it's the responsibility of the people that create the food waste to make sure that it gets to a place where people are going to eat it. That's what I really support because that actually eliminates people from wanting to create more food waste. It's not just about somebody coming to pick it up from them. I believe that LA, along with the LA Food Policy Council, can create the country's most robust food waste prevention and food rescue system in the country. As you know, SB 1383 is coming down the pike, where not less than 20% of currently disposed of edible food must be donated by 2025. And so if we are ahead of the game as a city, then we will succeed indefinitely. I'd like to thank Councilmembers Krikorian and Huizar for promoting this motion. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And Frank and Ida, if you're still here, come on up as well.
Hi, my name is Amy Hammers. I am the recycling specialist for the city of Burbank, but I'm also a Los Angeles resident. And I actually, a few years ago, when I was working in the filming and event community, started a food donation program from the productions. It's not the easiest thing to do because we were dealing with prepared food. Prepared food tends to be the riddle of the Sphinx as far as food donation, but we proved it could be done with a sound plan and a willing amount of policy leadership. And I really want to commend the city council for thinking about this and making it known that the leadership starts with the city. So by starting the program at the level of city buildings and city events really shows leadership to all the other production companies out there that they can do this. And I am willing to help as, in any way I can, to help facilitate this through my experience, and I really appreciate that. As we are looking to divert more waste from the landfills, there's going to be more and more pressure from the state, and so this is a really solid move and can expand further. Thank you.
Great, no, thank you. Our final speaker, that's just an individual speaker on this item.
Good afternoon. Frank Tamburella with Hunger Action LA. It was nine years ago or so that Hunger Action LA members rallied here at City Hall urging LA to take a stand against food waste and therefore against poverty and in favor of the environment. And Councilmember Huizar responded with the original version of this ordinance. That first one didn't quite stick, but we rejoice to see that it's been revived. I do want to sound a note of concern about Assembly Bill 2178 that was recently passed and signed by Governor Brown that could make it costly and difficult for volunteer groups to distribute food, especially to the homeless and public. And this is counterproductive because we have a big homeless problem in LA, and we don't need to be stopping volunteers from feeding people. We also have a lot of immigrant families who are being scared off of public benefits by the potential changes to public charge in the Trump administration's proposals. So we need more food being distributed. So keep your eye out for AB 2178, and I will be following up with your offices about it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Krikorian, I know your name's on the queue. We still have on this particular item the multiple speaker cards that have also included 11, but if you wanted to wait until after that or speak now? Okay. So we'll come back, we'll be right before we vote on this item to you. So going back to the multiple speaker cards then. Herman? Previn? You guys can all come on up? And Walsh, come on up. So if you all want to come on up, if you don't want to speak, you don't have to come on up, but if you want to speak, go ahead and get in line to come on up. Eric?
So now that we're in discussion of the food czars, the Bureau's assistance legislative program to allow me with my EBT card, along with Ms. Decker, to provide consideration of surplus food for the homeless. How many years have I come to City Hall to delegate on behalf of the EBT to allow homeless people to have a $1,000 EBT card credit, essentially to improve the quality of their life? Well, for that reason, Ms. Fatamar Krikorian of the franchise agreement provisions regarding food has not provided a donation.
Do not yell into the microphone or we're going to cut your time.
Sir? I cannot speak if your overtones interrupt my public comment, but I'm talking about a climate change in Environmental Justice Committee to recycle food in franchise agreements for provisions of donations managed by Ms. Fatamar Krikorian, who can't provide me with the goddamn EBT card. In addition to that, sir, in consideration of my other items regarding Jose Huizar's reactivating, the restoring of council files, maybe by that point, we can vacate all proceedings to the most recent legislative body to understand how to hide a girlfriend's status as of the date on the file's expiration time. You know, the Bureau of Engineering reports to Rosita Boulevard regarding city council. I sound like a Red Sox guy, but I'm sorry, it's just my voice. In addition to all these decisions, I want to go back to the trip and fall. You see, Woollett's versus Los Angeles is a requirement that you fix all streets and sidewalks with $1.00 billion, which you have not done so. So as long as the infrastructure is not repaired, we're going to have wetbacks slipping and suing the city of Los Angeles, like Jose Huizar has sued by Francine Godoy to vacate a street.
Okay, not on the topic. So go ahead and start us one minute for general public comment for not following the rules. One minute. There you go.
If you can't stay on topic and do what the dibble-dwarf idiot up there says you have to do, as he scratches have to do, as he scratches his chin the way I scratch my left nut, you find out that the meds are not working. And in addition to that, because of Trump taking back the Israelite niggers to their Jewish country and burying them behind the border we plan to build, we're going to keep all the white niggers who have come here illegally as immigration reform is going to change the policy of the legislative body. So as long as there's a measure like Measure 2 and an EBT card, as long as there is legislation to create a proactive community, as long as there's Trump to talk about the lying news of Jose Huizar's fat bitch wife who sleeps with a fucking lying asshole like that, you're still going to have...
Okay, no, you're not under the purview. You're done. Go ahead and sit down. Now you're disrupting this meeting.
John Walsh, item 11, citywide surplus food policy ordinance. There's no surplus food in Los Angeles. You see people eating off the gutter. They've turned, you know, a small section of the LA Times is now all you can eat. There's not much food there, and it's terrible food. Too much, number 12, we have too much reliance on outside councils. But I'd like to go now into my prepared public comment, and I just want everyone to know that Mr. O'Farrell is the worst.
Okay. Items under the purview of this council, please.
Yeah, well, Mr. O'Farrell is under, I'm now in my general public comment. You used up 40 seconds of my time. Mr. O'Farrell is the worst. Mr. Busciano is bad. Mr. Blumenthal is okay. And I'm telling you right now that I can't wait till the day we see the last of you up there. Because, you know, we said that we were going to get rid of you. We said we'd get rid of you, and you said bullshit. Well, you're leaving now because Mike...
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Always a pleasure. Mr. Previn?
Well, you won't have to...
All right, Mr. Walsh, don't disrupt this meeting. Go ahead and sit down. Thank you. Eric?
Thank you, John, for your service. Item 17 is a lawsuit about the conduct of LAPD, and there's nothing described as to what specifically happened, because it's a closed-session item. And I wanted to speculate that it might have to do with Officer Graciano, Duarte, and Morris, who are working for Harry Ado, and Michael Moore was taking his picture today. It was great. But what happened earlier today, and this may be the lawsuit that's pending, is Mitchell Englander, who has been deposed...
You've got to speak on the actual items on this agenda. You're not on those. Go ahead and start his one minute for general public comment. I'm not, I don't keep giving warnings.
You're not allowed to speculate.
Told you that this morning as well. Start his one minute for general public comment.
Public-private partnerships are exciting. They certainly are, especially when you're bringing in international counsel that have worked on both sides, both screwing the public and helping the public. So we're wondering whether or not Loeb and Loeb and the other firm that you're engaging to team up to get Mr. Huizar's civic center, if he still, if he survives the current scandal, squared away. I'm not sure about that. I, I'm worried. Item number 14 is a vacation of city property adjustment. Mr. Blumenthal has been supervising this one in his district. But all of the vacations of city property have moved to the Public Safety Committee, which is an egregious misstep. And Stephanie Yule, who sits right next to you, is one of your staffers who has been extremely, the opposite of diligent, in communicating that the public does not want to be raped by you in city call meetings, Mr. Englander.
Thank you very much. Your time's up.
No, my general public comment begins now.
That's it, your time is up.
Right.
Thank you. Bye.
I don't have a general public comment.
That was your general public comment. Thank you. So the next speaker is going to be Antonia Ramirez. Come on up. You're disrupting this meeting. Go ahead and sit down. If you're going to continue to disrupt this meeting, now you're blocking somebody else from the public from speaking.
God bless America and God bless Donald Trump. God bless America and God bless Donald Trump. We're going to clean house. We're going to deport all the wetbacks and the gang...
Ms. Ramirez, we're going to, we're going to start your one minute for general public comment, because you're not on the topics again. So, okay, there you go. Now you can do that.
Ice, ice, ice. We thank you and we love you. Please enforce the rule of law and round up all the homeless, criminal, chungo, Latino, wetbacks and gangbangers, pigs, pussies, and thieves, not to mention losers. Stop the drugs and stop the gangs. Start by deporting, deporting all the wetbacks and gangbangers in all shelters and free housing, including at the new bridge housing located at 711 North Alameda Street, LA, California 90012. Deport all the female wetbacks in beds number 1, 4, 6, 7, 9, 11, 13, 14, and 15, and all the Latino gangbangers in both trailers. Incidentally, female gangbanger Cynthia, bed number 9, has maliciously and recklessly plugged up and vandalized all the toilets at the Grand Park Block 4, Music Center Grand Park, females bathroom Block 4, and the females bathroom at La Placita Lot Number 2 and the Burger King at Grand Avenue. That woman's been plugging up all the goddamn toilets.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. The next speaker, Patricia McAllister. All right, Ms. McAllister, items 11, 12, and 15.
Okay, number 11. Here, this is about the food. Lhasa's not doing his job. I don't think Lhasa's doing his job. And I hope some of this food doesn't go into the shelters, because I know you guys get millions for food for the shelters, so I don't want the millions of dollars to be stolen and you put this food in there. And this food must be safe. It has to be safe, and it should be tested. Just because people are homeless doesn't mean you can just throw anything at them. Just like you make sure that the food is safe that's in the restaurants and whatnot, we must make sure that this food is also safe. Number 12, you still, the city attorney's office has a $137 million budget. They claim they have over 500 lawyers, they have over 300 employees, over 800 employees, 129 million is for salaries, and 8 million is for expenses. What kind of expenses do you have in the city attorney's office for $8 million? Now they want to hire more outside law firms. Here, they want to hire Ask Hurst LLP, and they also have conflicts of interest, this law firm you want to waive that. Why are you hiring outside lawyers? You're not even using part of this 129 million. You're going to take 1.5 million and get it from the Municipal Improvement Corporation of Los Angeles. What kind of crap is this? The reason why you guys have all these pony shows, an hour and a half worth of pony shows is because you don't want to be exposed. Now let's go to item number 15, where you want to transfer $400,000 from the General City Purposes Fund to city council. Now, what's the 400,000 for? It just says for some improvements. Now, I talked to the controller's office. I asked them, I used to work in accounting. I asked them, I said, are you getting receipts or anything for all this money? They said, no, we don't get any receipts. We just, whatever they tell us they use it for, we just go with that. That is not how accounting works, and the controller needs to be held accountable. Accountants keep track of all money spent. They get receipts. He's not getting any receipts for all this money that he's giving you guys. And I went over there and talked to them, so I'm not, I know what I'm talking about, okay? We need some receipts. We need you guys to stop this, all of this, and I call it stealing. I, I go through all of this. I worked in accounting, I studied it at the university level, good grades in it, and I know what I'm talking about. I want it to end, and I want it to end now, because when you, when you misappropriate money and misuse it, that means we have to take up the slack, the taxpayers. Now, if you go to these casinos and whatnot, what do they feel with? Lawyers, city officials? Why are you stealing more? I think you're stealing, because each year you, you have drug habits and all of that, a lot of you, gambling habits. You have to keep stealing because you, you got to get that money. Now, my public comment, I want to thank President Trump. As we speak, our military is being prepared for these 200,000 or how many illegal aliens that are going to infiltrate this nation. I want people in that area to be moved out. We want to bomb them from the air. We want to shoot them. We want lethal gas, and we want drones. They are not coming up in this nation, okay? Now, here's another thing. I told you a long time ago this country has been invaded. I studied the school district in California alone, only, over 80% of the districts in this state are illegal alien Hispanics, Latinos, Asians, and Filipinos. That means American citizens, get your weapons ready, because once we start bombing them coming through here, you're going to see them coming out of cracks in this country. We've got about 35 million illegal aliens and 20 million illegal alien anchor babies. Americans, get your weapons. The Democrats are trying to overthrow this government. We're going to take them all out. And take this man's phone. This is the man left his phone.
And Ms. Ramirez, I've already told you three times about disrupting this meeting, which you're just doing. So that will be the end of your time in this chamber today. Thank you very much.
Talk to me.
Yes. Sergeants, if you can please escort both of them out for disrupting the meeting. Thank you.
Hey, figure. Talk to me. I'm standing up, folks.
Please go ahead. You're disrupting this meeting by yelling out now as well. Gather your belongings and show them out. Thank you very much. Continuing to disrupt this meeting.
I can't take it, because you're a little bitch.
Chris?
Hang on.
Manassarian for item 14?
So we should wait a moment.
Now he's disrupting the meeting, and he's disrupting the public from speaking, as he's still yelling out.
So we can't actually continue while he's still shouting as he's escorted out of the room? And just in case the mics aren't getting, he's, he's screaming all the way out, as is Ms. Ramirez.
He's disrupting the speaker, a general public comment speaker on item 14 from speaking, and so is Ms. Ramirez. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and Ms. Ramirez is still shouting as she's leaving.
And Wayne, you can't keep walking up and down the aisles. You know the rules, too. Have a seat or stand in the back. Welcome.
Hi. We, my name is Chris Manassarian. I represent the applicant for the street vacation. We just want to say that we're, we're, we are in support of the motion to extend the time to act, and we're continuing to build neighborhood consent and address all concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, colleagues, that concludes all of the public comment on all the items as well. So public comment and general public comment is closed. We're going to go ahead and take up item 11. Mr. Krikorian, do you want to speak on item 11?
Very briefly. My parents were both raised during the Great Depression, and when I was growing up, food waste was one of the worst sins you could commit. And yet, I think we all do a pretty good job of preventing that individually and in our homes, but institutions regularly fail at that, miserably fail in the city. When I was on the school board in Burbank, one of my greatest frustrations was seeing the amount of edible food that was every single day thrown in the trash, because of requirements of federal regulations, that this usable food could not be recaptured by charities and people who are serving people in need. We have also been guilty of that ourselves in the city of Los Angeles. And so the motion that's before you today will help to remedy that. It will help to remedy the amount of edible food that's going into our landfill, creating methane, will reduce the amount of edible food that is made unavailable to those who need it. It will do that by ensuring that we have policies in place to require a plan for food donations for all food service contracts, food concessions, and food served during events, city-sponsored events and city-permitted events. The goal is to provide a system, which some of the members of the public addressed, to try to make it as easy as possible to connect those who have surplus food with those who need that food. That's the policy that's before you today, and I want to especially thank Mr. Huizar for his leadership on this throughout the, the many years as well. And we finally have a policy before us now, which will be effective in preventing food waste and getting food into the hands of people who need it. So I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your leadership on that as well, Mr. Krikorian. Okay, colleagues, go ahead and open the roll on item 11. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now we can go ahead and take items 1 through 5 up. Go ahead and open the roll on items 1 through 5. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, and then items 12 through 15, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, and Mr. Krikorian on items 16, 17, and 18?
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 16 and 17 were considered by the Budget and Finance Committee, both of which were at meetings in which a quorum was not present, but on my recommendation, they advanced in their routine settlements unless members have questions or concerns. We've exhausted public comment here today, so those matters can be considered an open session. Number 18, we will need to retire to closed session for an update from the city attorney on that matter.
Okay, very well. So we'll go ahead and vote on items 16 and 17, unless any colleagues have any questions on those items.
And Mr. President, on item 16 and the case entitled McCanday-Dubergne versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000 in settlement of the matter.
Okay, and we're going to go ahead and vote on those separately. So we'll go ahead and vote on 16 first. We'll open the roll on item 16. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved, and now item 17.
And on item 17 and the case entitled Aram Tagmasian versus the City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $750,000 in settlement of the matter.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on item 17. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 2 noes.
Okay. Thank you very much. What other items do we have before us besides 18?
Item 10 is still before council. A motion is required for that item.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and, on item 10, we're going to go ahead, the motion before us, colleagues, will be to confirm the lean on A, on 10A, and receive and file 10B. Okay, so that'll be the motion.
And a second for that?
And a second for that, Mr. Krikorian. Okay, thank you very much. On 10, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. So now we can go into closed session on 18. Okay. So sergeants, if we can go ahead, go into closed session and clear the council chambers. So members of the audience, if you're here, you can go ahead and step outside. We have to go into closed session on this item. We have to go into closed session on this item.
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides peace of mind...
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park...
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Ever notice how we no longer focus our attention on one thing at a time? We don't just walk, or even just drive. We focus on so many different objects, we don't notice the dangers ahead of us. We're a distracted society. We're blind to the importance of being safe, to the things that really matter. Blind to the things that could actually save our life. We're blind to everything surrounding us. Be aware. Move with care. Watch the road.
...the anniversary of the Los Angeles Philharmonic. So it's a great way to pay homage to all the people, the community, to celebrate with them with music, having fun, enjoying this beautiful city.
I try to make each and every event really a nice day. Family oriented, that's the best part, I think.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Ever notice how we no longer focus our attention on one thing at a time? We don't just walk, or even just drive. We focus on so many different objects, we don't notice the dangers ahead of us. We're a distracted society. We're blind to the importance of being safe, to the things that really matter, blind to the things that could actually save our life. We're blind to everything surrounding us. Be aware, move with care, watch the road.
This is the 27th sequel of the end. We're kicking it off right here at Disney Concert Hall, and the day is going to end at the Hollywood Bowl with a performance by The LA Phil.
This is celebration of the 100th anniversary of the Los Angeles Philharmonic. So it's a great way to pay homage to all the people, the community, to celebrate with them with music, having fun, enjoying this beautiful city.
I try to make each and every event really a nice day. Family oriented, that's the best part, I think.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
And begin the special... Let's recess the regular meeting and begin the special meeting.
Oh, and just before we do that, Mr. President, I'll just note that there was nothing to report out from the Brown Act from our closed session.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, and Madam Clerk.
Blumenfeld, Bana, Buscino, Sadio, Englander, Hirstasen, Weezer, Kretz, Crucorian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rui, Wesson, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, our first item, which item is on the...
Today's special meeting has one item, 19A.
Okay, without objection, the item is before us. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards on this item?
Yes, there are cards.
Okay, if I could have the following people come on up. Eric Previn, Walsh, and Wayne from Encino. Mr. Previn? I believe Mr. Previn is not present, so we will move on to Mr. Walsh. John Walsh? Go ahead, Mr. Walsh, or... 19?
These are maps. Check these maps out. Sometimes they sneak them through for high-rise development, especially in black areas where they're trying to get rid of black people and bring in white, rich white people. Watch out.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. If we could have Wayne, Wayne from Encino, and Oriana, and Mr. Herman after that.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, so this is now the special meeting, and we attempted to bring the sponsor of this amendment, Mr. Jose Weezer, down here, but he's currently hiding on the fourth floor from all the LA Times reporters.
If you could please stick to the item, please?
Yes, well, yeah, well, we're talking about CD-14, and that's on 100 South Grand, and it's controlled by an alcoholic sex maniac. So we just want to make sure that $17,380 for this map? Oh, okay. All right, yes, we gotta suck it in, yes. So Marquis Aristasen wants a friendly amendment to reduce it to $1,100 to suck it in because it's too big.
Can we stick to the item, please?
Yes, and, and we know that because Jose Weezer likes big things in little places. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If we could have Oriana, please? Oriana, is Oriana?
Hi, good afternoon. I understand that these topics are for some kind of architecture. I took the chance of taking the floor and discuss, using this moment to request guidance. As to architecture, this side would be only pertaining to architecture. If I have a case, I used to work at the school district, so I learned that if I see a case of a child that is being mistreated, I can go to the police, or hospital, or social worker and request assistance.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but you have to stick to the item.
Where would I go for this? Where, where would I go for this?
Well, actually, you, you know, you're signing up for general comment, and we could actually have someone help you out on the side for your other issues, but this is pertaining item number 19A, so...
Okay, thank you.
You could speak on public comment.
Thank you for the time and the guidance procedures.
Thank you. If we could have Mr. Herman, and then Antonio Ramirez after that?
Is it a fact that big things come out of South Grand Avenue? And since I'm a subject of matter in Council District 14 for the longest of years, which I can prove, I find that the development has discriminated not just against myself as an individual, but against the community of Angelenos. Because the way the developer and the related companies tie in together, it's apparent they're stealing our money. They're taking away from our use of maps, tracks, such as at 100 South Grand Avenue, for their sole purpose of allowing wetbacks to live in high-rise development. But for my mixed use, I don't want to be with Jose Weezer when he goes down for cockfighting with me.
Thank you. And our last speaker, Antonio Ramirez?
Thank you very much. This area is, is quite posh, it's elegant. You've got South Grand Avenue right next to First Street, which you have the beginning on Grand and First Street. You've got the beginning of the Grand Park where it starts to cascade down all the way to Spring Street, right across the street from City Hall. It's absolutely, the, the beauty of that area is not the courthouse or the restaurants, but the beautiful park, the, the Grand Park, the Music Center, Grand Park. We've got a bad problem of homelessness, and yes, you've got chronic homeless people that are junkies, wetbacks and gangbangers, and graffiti and vandalism. We do need to clear up...
We seem to be removed from the track map issue.
Sorry?
You don't seem to be on topic, which involves...
Well, with the, the tracked area, the maps being designed, I just wish the maps would include the gangbangers, the wetbacks, and all the criminal elements.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. That fulfills public comment. Thank, thank you, Mr. Ramirez, your time has expired. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, that fulfills public comment. If we could open the roll and close the roll, and tabulate the vote? Ten ayes. Thank you, and if we could send that forth with? And if we, and now if we could adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting? Madam Clerk, do we have anything before us in the regular meeting?
I believe there is still a card under general public comment.
Thank you for that, and we do have one more speaker for public comment. If we could have Ms. Oriana come on up. Do you want to, I could have someone help you on the side, or do you want to forfeit your time? You get one minute for public comment.
Okay, is there anything? Um, is there any budget that we can get to volunteer or even mend certain things that we disagree on, since we are the people? I mean, that's just a comment, right? That's a question there. Okay, so now that we know what a question is, what would be a comment?
Ms. Oriana, what, what district do you reside in?
Okay, we need to know, why is this just a comment? Why, why aren't changes being done? And if they are, we want to, we want to be able to hear it. So you see what I'm saying? You're, you're having me be disabled here.
So Ms. Oriana?
That you pay taxes? We need to know that...
I'm gonna have staff go help you on the side to address your concerns. This is a public comment, not a question and answer, so if you go to the side, I'll have one of my deputies come and talk to you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Oriana. Great, so is there anything else before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Great, let's post it and refer. Members, any announcements? Looking to my right, Mr. Crucorian, announcements? Mr. Sadio side, announcements? No? If, all members, if we could stand, and if the audience could stand for adjourning motions? I want to look to my left, Mr. Blumenfeld has an adjourning motion.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of David Blum. On the evening of October 1st, David was killed while walking across Fallbrook Avenue in Woodland Hills on his way to Bet Hadmidrash synagogue in Woodland Hills. He was going to celebrate a very joyous occasion, Simchat Torah, but before he could go and cross and rejoice for that holiday, he was fatally struck by a delivery truck while crossing in an unmarked crosswalk. He was a member of, at Bet Hadmidrash in Woodland Hills for nearly 20 years. He was very devout, he attended services daily. He was married to his wife Lori for nearly 30 years. He's also survived by their three children, Noah 21, Hayim 17, and Yaela 14. Their son Noah, in his eulogy, called their father the quote, "Hidden angel God sent from above, who knew how to see the brightness in the dark. Everything he did was for us," he said. Lori Blum called her husband one of the sweetest, nicest people you could meet. She told a story about how upon meeting an elderly man who was also a musician, David was a musician, he began to drive them to their orchestra rehearsals every week, and when that man's wife became ill, he drove him to, to the hospital every day so he could visit. You know, in these chambers, we often talk about vision zero and traffic safety in this abstract concept. Well, David's tragic and untimely death reminds us that the victims of traffic collisions are not abstractions, but they are real-life people who had very much to contribute to Los Angeles, whose deaths leave a void in the lives of the people around them. And there are, there are things that we can do about that, and that's what vision zero needs to be about. The Westlake Village Symphony, where David Blum had been a member for years, is dedicating its 7:30 PM concert on November 3rd at St. Jude in the Apostle Church in Westlake Village to David Blum's honor. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Is there any other adjournments? Looking to my right? No more adjournments, and council is adjourned. Thank you, thank you very much, members.